I crossed over by Oldham's Market all the time when I cut around to go to Warsaw. Every time I get a pull for that railroad crossing, I think Pete, that's where you got killed at. I said, what else is there? I said, oh, you survived around town and hand out candy all week? And she said, what? He said, yeah, back then you can do that.
I'm in Oldham's Market, he has the best crap on.
And, and the ice cream was always so good getting it out of the cooler.
They have the best convenience, the best crap. You survive that supply station, it's great.
Yeah. She didn't want to sit by you, huh?
Yeah.
No one is.
Did you take a shower?
She's, she is got you.
So you can still get on those freestyle levers, you know they're backward.
Oh, yeah.
Right, so I haven't had one for over two weeks.
Oh, man, you have to freak yourself.
Well, I've been doing that for years anyway, so it's not really that big a deal, but I'm starting to get used to not having to do that.
Yeah.
It looks like I'm back to it, you know what I mean?
Do you use CVS or Alderney?
Uh, Alderney.
Okay.
Well, then, I was approved for the next, I wanted to take the next one.
Hmm.
So I turned my prescription in.
Aren't they, aren't they?
Making phone calls and now meantime, they're back.
I said, I think somebody brought them here. Their, I said, have they been fixed? Oh, yeah, they've all been fixed. So, cause if they're not fixed, I'm gonna trap, T and R from Warsaw coming in. The foreign nationals don't think, come out, trap them, and new Roman brings them back out. I don't want, I said, they'll bring them next to you, but you just don't have any more stitches. Which is their own fix, well, I watched around my driveway this spring, they weren't all fixed.
Yeah.
So then, this like speech, successful kitten shows up on my road, which we test you. And I call, I text her, I text her, I said, oh.
Yeah, it's crazy how it's, some of the stuff is.
Yeah, my momma sticks for sure of this.
I turned twenty-six, about three years ago, I turned probably six when I entered.
I believe that when I see.
Mine, I wasn't married yet, so couldn't get on my wife's insurance. And I didn't do anything through my lawyer, so I was having to pay out my bill for, so I was eventually, it's just crazy.
Oh, you still use a vod?
Well, I would use a vod a lot of the time.
Oh.
Pull it from the vod.
I've got two inside of I.
That only lasted a couple of months, but I just like changed my diet, I turned these few parts, like I just.
So I got pants, and I thought that entertained, and he thought the biggest pant was a doll. But I'm telling you, she still acts like a doll. She's a ginger. Yeah.
He's been on like, they got some, Eli Lilly, where they'll give you this card, it's like two hundred. It's like thirty-five bucks a month. They wouldn't give you the pink ring, but you could get there.
I like cats and dogs, but I like to be able to take them and go somewhere with them.
Oh, really?
I can wait for a week or two, and therefore I'm. No, I have, I have a friend that's five minutes, but he should check, I have everything automatic.
Yeah, I did raise him in those kind of boxes. Our celebration, celebration.
Well, I'm trying to take those, but I get babysitting.
We believe, we believe points around. You come back?
Yeah.
And problems, yeah.
I just said you.
And we have, I think the new returns, like two days, he'll come and see me, he'll be like the other, the other week, he came out. Look at her.
Yeah, we took both trees down while my dad's.
So, he was one of the greatest from a baby with a bottle.
So we had those all cut down.
He thinks you're serious.
Yeah.
I know.
But. And wrong ones, problems with mom. So you, they.
Oh, I know.
We go away.
There's not, they have, they have so much angry power up from the police. Oh, they just know it did, not by us. Yeah, yeah.
When will you say it's right with her all the time?
By us, it's gonna be that kind of agreement.
Took a couple nights before he'd be climbed in the bed.
Yeah.
I'm really worried about it, just for everybody. But the people, Gary's friends that you find out.
They've got that.
So I can predict it soon.
I, you mentioned, I was wondering if. Yeah, that would change the stuff.
I said, you're already learning that. That was, that was.
I know you.
Grandkids took it. I said, this is, this is pictures we have printed on the walls and. Yeah, maybe it's another world.
Is that from America?
Well, we have a lot of contractors.
Well, it's like tonight, Herman jumped up in my lap, and I got a brush, and brush. He jumped down, and he had enough, and then he's.
But you can't get good insurance down there.
They, they, well, I got a brush and a scarf, brush and.
Yeah. Yeah. I didn't, I didn't either.
He comes, he's like, you, you, that's my brush. Like, he's.
I'll see you Friday.
More.
Yeah.
Ours is just a, it's just a retirement vacation spot, that's what it was for mom.
Is this?
All right, let's go ahead and call this meeting to order.
Good.
We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic where which stands one nation under God and the principle with liberty and justice for all.
All right, I'm gonna start off here by, um, second reading of the adoption of the two thousand twenty-five budget. The first fund here is the rainy day fund. The adopted budget is three hundred dollars. The general fund is one thousand, or a hundred and eighty-two thousand, four hundred and forty-five dollars. Local road and street is thirteen thousand, three hundred and ninety. Motor vehicle highway is thirty-four thousand, three hundred and thirty-three. Park and recreation, seven thousand, eight hundred and seven dollars. Commutative capital cigarette tax, uh, twenty-three hundred. Commutative capital development, eighteen hundred and fifty-four dollars. Uh, that puts the adopted budget at. Two hundred and forty-two thousand, four hundred and twenty-nine dollars. Uh, the adopted tax levy, a hundred and thirty-eight thousand. Come back down here to economic development, income tax, eighty thousand dollars. American relief fund is zero, so. And that is it on that.
I make a motion, we accept the budget for the two thousand twenty-five.
I'll second the motion.
Oh, in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That's his copy, that's you. That was.
Oh, that one's mine.
That was for you.
He didn't need something. That's my, that's my.
Oh, that's your copy, okay.
Yeah.
Somebody took a paper flip though. I was just kidding, okay? Well, I loaded a bunch of new ones in there, so.
Hey. All right, now we're gonna move on to approval of the previous minutes. Um, did everybody get a chance to read those and go over that?
Yes, I did. I make a motion, we accept the minutes of the previous meeting, September tenth.
Second to motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oh, you're sending that, all right. This will be mine.
And we'll move on to approval of accounts payable vouchers.
And that is in the amount of one hundred and eighty-six thousand, nine hundred and sixty-four hundred and ninety cents.
Make a motion that we approve that?
I make a motion, we approve accounts payable vouchers.
I'll second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, and we're gonna move on to clerk treasurer's business.
And all I have tonight is, uh, I need to get a couple of write-offs. Um, Barbara Ashby from outside of town has passed. And she left a balance of two hundred and four dollars and seventy cents. Um, and then also Larry Scripter, um, I have him in tracks. But he is either on disability, or he's moved out of state, and he's just not being caught. So, I just thought I'd just write them off.
Be taken off the books.
Yeah.
Well, I make a motion that we, they write off those two accounts. Or whatever the total amount is.
Uh, the total amount would be, um, six hundred and five dollars.
Or six hundred and five dollars.
I'll second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
And that's all I have.
Okay, and we'll move on to ordinance and resolutions. You got anything there? I think we took care of that last week, as far as two hours worth of, yeah.
Except that one, we can do that in the working session.
We'll move, yeah, there's, like you said, there's one that's missing as far as that, that we missed, but we'll get this one scheduled for this next working meeting, and we got one to address there that we forgot, as far as that goes, and then we'll move on to the other stuff. So we just, like, we did last month, just go ahead and we'll get something scheduled, you know, where we can all get together, as far as we go with that, so, for another working session. And we'll move on to fire and township business.
The only thing we have is, uh, we're gonna continue doing handing out candy and stuff like that at the fire department, and probably looking to do the same thing we did as last year with, uh, our Hall of Courage and stuff, so.
Can I come out there when I run out of my, when I run out of candy?
Absolutely. You gotta go through the Hall of Courage, though.
Bring, bring a pillowcase.
That's all I have.
Okay, we'll move on next to attorney business.
I've got nothing for today.
Pretty sure.
I'm speechless.
Speechless, okay, well, I guess that makes it quick. Move on to new business, um, we've got deep price on the list here.
I wanna talk about town money. Not a, not a pleasant subject. But I've been told repeatedly, the town can't afford police protection. The town has spent a lot of money on employee pay and benefits. For example, what is the monthly cost for insurance for, for town employees? What, what do we pay a month for that?
Um, it's, um, fifteen hundred for each one.
How many are there?
Two.
Okay, right now there are two.
Yes.
Okay. Just talk about adding another full-time employee. Be honest with you, this town has not grown in seventy years. Not a bit. So you're asking, how many households are actually paying the bill, not how many people, how many households? I mean, you're asking us to pay a lot of money, and we still don't have town protection from, from the police. It's getting out of hand. I don't have an endless wallet, neither do anybody else sitting in here. But the, just the benefits package for our town employees rivals most factories around here. In fact, better than, many, better than any I ever worked for.
There's a lot of things that go into that, but, um, for one thing, it, the, the cost of what we, we have a contract with the sheriff's department, and what we pay, what we pay for that is, is a lot less than what they, what would be to have the, having the, an officer in town.
I understand that.
And that they, and we're not gonna get any better. We're not gonna be any better coverage if they, than what they, than what we, than what we have right now. That they, there, there's always gonna be times when they're not there, and it, there's times to, when they are, and they, people know that, and it's, but they.
The town spent how much money to buy this building?
Oh, no, that's, yeah, that's, I completely, understand.
We did.
Yeah, let's not get into that right there, but we, we're working on something.
People need to know.
Oh, I know, I know they do, as far as that goes, as far as that, but you have to remember, I mean, and I understand and I agree with you on that or whatever, um, we started out with a new town council this year, and we've had stuff happening, and now we're still trying to work on stuff, I've got something here that I'm gonna bring up here after a bit, um, as far as that. Um, and, and I know some of this stuff, it needs to be looked at, and we all need to be involved in it, and we need to know where the money's going and stuff like that, so.
Well. I just, I just don't think that, that people recognize the wake-up call, call that's coming.
Right.
Because there is a, there's a big, big bill still on the water treatment plant, from when it was originally built.
Right, and we gotta do a lot of repairs out there that's coming up here, so.
Why did they buy this building when they could've paid you on that?
Well, that was previous town council, so, so we can keep working on it to do better. I understand your frustration.
You don't know the bottom of it.
Oh, I know.
Do we know how much that's going to cost us to fix the treatment plant?
We have no budget numbers on that right now, that's something that, yeah.
We've got Commonwealth looking into that, that they, we haven't got anything back from them yet.
Who is actually running the treatment plant right now?
Ashbury.
Ashbury is.
Ashbury.
Okay, are they doing a reasonable job of it?
Yeah, they're keeping track of everything, as far as that, we get a monthly report from them, that's telling us, you know, the repairs that we need to make, a lot of the stuff is very expensive at the moment, so we're trying to take in, and, and work through that, um, as far as that, but no, they're, they're keeping it going, and they're going ahead and looking at, you know, what's going on, and what things need to be addressed, as far as that goes. Um, right now, and we're applying for grants.
Is that a little report they give us?
My understanding is, I have said, there's a lot of this, this, uh, shortfalls out there that need to be taken care of.
That we're, it's gonna take a while, because we gotta get the grants, otherwise, we're gonna have to foot the bill. So that's the whole purpose of why we're working with OKRA right now, we're working with Commonwealth right now, as far as that, so we can go forward with the grants, so that we can get the extra help that we need to make those improvements.
Brian's, you're trying to get your, your lineman certification, right?
Right now, I'm working on my water and wastewater.
No lineman certification?
Not yet.
He's overwhelmed at the moment.
My pool climbing class takes two weeks, I'll be gone for two weeks.
Well, I'm sure you don't climb a pole in five minutes.
I gotta go through a school for that, and then, see, if I pass that pool climbing class, then I go in, and it takes, it's one course a year, so it's gonna take five, five courses, so five years to get it.
You're picking up dog chasing you.
There's a lot more to it than that.
Well, you know, but, but that's my concern, is that the money just keeps costing higher and higher and higher, and there's only two hundred and some households in this town paying the free.
Yeah. But the.
We got to the point here recently, uh, in, in not the too distant past, where we were paying two full-time employees with benefits and everything, close to two hundred thousand dollars a year. That's a little steep.
I don't think.
With benefits and, uh, yes, it is.
I, I was paying for that, no, it wasn't.
That is, that's, that's a, that's an exaggerated amount, but, um.
I bet it wasn't exaggerated very much.
Yeah, yeah, the, that is, the.
I would say it was probably about a hundred and forty thousand.
That was the salary.
No, that was everything.
No. That's, yeah, that's everything, that the.
Eighty thousand and sixty thousand, wasn't it?
And right now, RP, we only have one employee that decides the, the, which we need to have a second one, and right now, their, their, um, salaries are being paid by, uh, grant, for the, um, if we get a second one for the, um, the apprentice, apprenticeship program that they, and so that they, we wouldn't have, we're not, we wouldn't be having any of those costs, of the salary costs.
But we still have to pay him, and he deserves the money.
Yeah, he does, but it, but it's being paid.
But I don't see why we have to pay two full-time employees when there's not full-time work.
Because it's a sec, the second, if you, if you let it go, and without a second employee, it'll cost three times as much in order to have Ashbury do what we did, what the, a second employee will be doing, if, if, once they get qualified and certified, that they, and, and that's where everybody in town is going to be paying through the nose for it, because then we'll have to raise rates to cover that.
Well, I, I wholeheartedly disagree with that. I worked for the town part-time. When they needed help, there were several of us that came in and helped when Moran was the superintendent.
And we appreciate that, that was before we had a waste treatment plant.
That's right.
And waste treatment plant.
When I was in the hole, helping them dig the holes, I was setting transformers.
But you had to have somebody else there, if one person can't do that by themselves.
Exactly.
Yeah.
But I was part-time.
Yeah.
Go ahead, Rick.
I've talked to a few people, and Patty and I were talking the other day, and there had been, she told me, they've been talking about, um, farming out some utilities or whatever to other people. Have we even looked into that on the cost?
If you wanna bring that, I, I mean, if you wanna talk about that now, and since we're on this discussion of, you know, employees and hiring a second employer, whatever, um, I've been talking to Ashbury, um, as far as, you know, right now, um, we, we're with them for twenty-five hours a week, it's a hundred and nine thousand dollars a year, or a hundred and ten thousand dollars a year for Ashbury to take care of that stuff. Um, I've talked to them, and the part that I've talked about farming out, um, is to bring Ashbury in for thirty-five hours a week, which would take and relieve Brian, so that he doesn't have to take and work on weekends anymore, and he doesn't have to do any water testing. That way, it opens him up, so that he's got more time to take and work on the other stuff here in town, so it takes the workload off of him. Um, I have a new contract here, um, I, I really, I, I mean, it's gonna be a more of an expense, as, as far as that goes, to go to thirty-five hours, but we're gonna be guaranteed that we have people that have all their licenses, so everything with wastewater, everything with the water is gonna be by licensed contractors from Ashbury, as far as that goes, so it's, it's always being taken care of, as far as that, so we don't have to worry about, you know, who's taking care of the water, who's taking care of the sewer, um, and they've been doing really well right now, as far as with, working with us, you know, with the wastewater, um, but we still have a lot to go with the improvements that need to be made here in town. Um, just because it's been thirty years, and they're just sitting there, and, and stuff needs to be addressed, so I mean, there is other options that we're looking at.
My question is, is wouldn't it be smart if there's even talk about this kind of stuff, and, and like even the, the electric or whatever? Right now, we go through, what, two mail-in?
It goes directly through, IMPA is our electrical contractor right now, as far as that goes.
They have to buy it from NIPSCO or someplace, right?
Um, that's a whole different story as far, no, 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 IMPA is, they work with NIPSCO, they work with RMC, I mean, they all use the same lines to some aspect, but we're still, we're getting a better price through IMPA than we would if we were go to NIPSCO, or if we went to RMC, so there's no broker in between. They're, they're doing the best they can, of course, with.
IMPA owns several, parts of several power plants that they, and they, that the rates that they, they, they are, there is no middle person, what?
They buy the power from somebody, right?
No, they, we, we, we have a part, we own a part of the power plants.
Right.
So they, they, IMPA does, that they, 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 they have the share in it, so it's, it's, they, as they make the power, it, they, that it's, it's coming right to us, and we, we already own it.
So we pay IMPA, right?
Yes, we pay IMPA for the.
Pay the town, is that correct?
Mm-hmm.
That helps us?
Yes.
What I, what I'm asking is, because we own all our own infrastructure and everything, so we have to take care of it.
We have to, and we have a lot of stuff coming up here.
And I didn't realize that we own clear open water.
Yep.
Right.
Have we even done a study, because I don't think.
That's coming.
Every, every year you do a study.
Right, it's, it's coming.
It would be more cost-effective.
Right.
And, you know, there again, if you, if you farm some of that out, then we would still have to have a town, a town employee full-time, I would say.
Right.
But we might not have to have two.
No.
You know?
No, that's, that's where, like I said, I would like to move forward with Ashbury, and just give them this extra stuff, and give Brian the relief as far as not having to take care of that stuff, not having to work on weekends, as far as that, and then he can keep moving forward with his training. What do you got, Kevin?
So as far as the thirty-five dollars a week, what is that as far as contract price? Is that a hundred and nine thousand for twenty-five hours a week?
A hundred and fifty-five thousand. Yep. It's basically, it's basically forty-five thousand more than we're paying right now, as far as that, to add them for that extra ten hours, you know, a week, as far as that goes, but, like I said, in turn, we're getting certified operators, as far as that, for everything, as far as that goes.
Now, is that just one?
No, they'll take care of everything, as far as that, there'll be five guys trained to take care of it in the green, as far as that goes, so anybody calls in sick, there's always another guy coming, as far as that.
So we don't have to pay their benefits.
And we're not paying their benefits, no, we're not.
In the, in one way or another, we do, because, because.
Well, it's.
That comes out through the contractor.
Okay, if you look at it this way, though, if we hire another person in here for forty hours a week, fifty-two weeks, at eighteen dollars an hour, it's over forty-five thousand dollars by the time you give them benefits. I mean, do the simple math, it's not, you know what I mean, that's just the wage, you know what I mean, that you're paying them without the benefits, and that's what you guys are starting bringing, you know what I mean, is that, we don't wanna be paying the extra benefits.
Okay, how much, how much the, the town utilities takes in, how much of that is, is taken care of, the cost of running the town, or how much of it is tax money, is taken care of running the town?
Uh, you'd have to give.
The utilities take care of themselves. And we, we have fantastic utility, uh, monies for those utilities, and the, um, the taxpaying part of it is just, uh, the roads and streets, and signs, things like that.
Parks and, utilities are, are each, all three independent, independent businesses on their own, that, that each one, they, they has, has the money coming into it, and money going out for it.
Okay, but if it's all going into separate buckets, which bucket is paying for these people to work?
There's percentages everywhere.
It's split between the different people, Dave, but they.
Right now, Brian is getting paid out of totally the water, which, that is coming back as a grant. When he gets done with his water, he will go to wastewater, and there will be another grant for three years, so for.
Six years.
Five years, we won't be paying him, we will get that money through grants.
And we would do, and we would be doing that with the.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, like, we're getting free, man.
And the thing is, if we give, if we have a second employee, that they, that'll be the same way with them for five years, plus they, plus. plus, plus going on toward the, any alignment, if, if we can get any grants for, for electric, but that the, another employee would, Dave, would go straight into the apprenticeship program.
I thought only one employee could be on the apprenticeship program.
Yes.
So, you can't put the second employee on that program, Keith. It's only one employee at a time.
Yeah.
Or we would have to take him, go back to paying Brian and put the other employee on to train him.
Then we'd have our own trained people and they, and the, the, the goal is eventually not to have the hundred and fifty-five thousand going out to Ashbury, that we'd have the, what, what you were saying, forty-five thousand to be, to an employee for benefits rather than having.
It's an untrained employee.
But they, after they go through the, they, they, after they go through the apprenticeship program.
That takes five years. That takes five years.
And it did, that, then we have them and then we can.
I'm talking about the next five years for right now, so that with the people here in town have good quality water and sewer and it's taken care of.
And they, and Ashbury will, Ashbury will be there for us, but they, because we have to have somebody trained with certification.
Yes, we do.
Yeah, and they, and if, but the thing is, is that, that's why we took them in for only the twenty-five hours because we were play, gonna have the, a second person to do and start being trained, and they, they can start working toward their apprenticeship, toward their, and becoming certified.
Hey, yeah.
And once you, once you become, once, once you have, I mean, once Brian.
All right, I'm gonna call this meeting to order. We're gonna stop arguing during this meeting. We're gonna stop it right now, right now. We're just gonna move on to something else. We're not gonna sit here and argue in a meeting. I'm gonna move on to the next thing here on business. Uh, we got Rachel here.
Can I bring you papers?
Sure.
I'm not really sure what I'm doing.
The back one is just from our neighbors, like signatures. But I have a little man back here that would like to say something first, then I can kinda clarify.
Just tell him.
Read your letter, buddy.
Read your letter.
My name is Orange, Orange, and I would like to take goats to our country fair. I would.
This was, he's reading the back page, sorry. It was just, he was asked, asked the neighbors yesterday if they would have signatures, if it would be okay with them if we had goats on our property. Um, we did talk to the planning commissioner, um, and they actually recommended that we come to you guys first before we would go to that. It's like, we have a hearing we'd have to do, um, explaining everything like what he's doing. Um, the grant would only, or the exemption would only be for our family and our property. It would not be for the entire town. We have a little over a half acre where we're at, um, but it wouldn't be for everybody else. They would have to do the same thing we do. Would have to come in, say what they want, um. Other than that, if we would move, it wouldn't stay with the property either. Somebody else would move in if they would want to do the same thing. They would have to go through all the hoops.
It's so he can participate in four H.
He would be able to participate. All of our children would be able to participate in four H. They, I mean, this is his first year, so he has ten years in it. Um, so the other ones are smaller than him, but this is his very first year of not many, but the bigger one. Um, the goats would all be in a fenced area. They'd be put up at night. We have a culled barn garage. We would plan to pin them up at night, and then if we were walking them, they'd be at halters, that kind of thing. They're not free roaming. They're not running around without. For males, they'd be neutered and they would be disbutted as well, so things are taking the horns off. They're not generally aggressive animals anyway. They're kinda still in docile as long as they probably don't see the feed bucket. That would change, that would change the matter, but I think, like, usually for, like, other animals, they're prey animals, so they're gonna.
But all other animals are a lot more aggressive. They're about the calmest and the quietest of the, of about anything.
They're not a dog. They're not gonna take off after you for sure, but. But we were just asking for your permission. We still haven't, we, they asked us to come to you guys first before we would go, um, to do a hearing over there.
Well, I think it'd be, be good to support the.
I think it's good to support four H, yes.
Yeah.
What's that?
Um, yeah, I would willingly like to ask, Mrs. Luchans asked me if they would please pay her, would she would pay me? And I said, no, I'll just let it be here.
They would basically be giving them a variance for this one occasion as far as that goes, like what she said. Well, yeah, Rachel, how many are we talking about?
Um.
I guess that's the one thing. I mean, if we're, if we're, we're gonna keep it small, I mean.
Yes, so I, you, I showed ten years in four H, and I always took two lambs, so if they can, they can be shown several years in a row, so it could be like, one goat could last us several children.
Right, right.
Um, I would say no more than two per child, and I don't know that all of the, they're all obviously not gonna show all at the same time, so there would be no max more than eight if they all showed at the same time. But then some of these are gonna be like butchered, like they're not gonna stay. They're gonna go, they're gonna go and be sold for me.
Right, as far as that goes.
We're not slaughtering them at our house.
Once they, they, the children leave four H, then they, then they'll cut down on the goats and they, they.
I mean, maybe I would keep one to mow my yard. I mean, mow my little.
Your passents in the area, but, but no, I wouldn't plan to keep eight at a time.
I don't think the ordinances are a problem, and I mean, to her point, the council can give its opinion today. I would imagine when she goes before the county, they're probably gonna make her publish a notice to all her neighbors.
Right.
And then if her neighbors have an issue with it, they can come to the hearing with the county. They can tell the county why they don't want it, and then the county would have the final say on whether or not it's permitted.
But we, what we could do, if we could tell the county what we think, they, they want to know what we think about it.
Yeah.
And they, personally, I think it's a, it's a good way of promoting four H. There needs to be more of it, Dave. I mean, I see, I know of a lot of kids that have goats ten miles away in somebody else's barn, and they gotta go and to take care of them, but that's not really taking care of them. That it's a, that they, just every once in a while, if you have them actually there.
I would rather see kids doing that than playing video games and on the phone all day long.
We milk out for Andy Limler. The, the, we would all go out there, but it kinda stinks because we're five minutes away, and we have to travel out there twice a day when we've got dairy to show.
Right.
So, these would be something that they have at home that they get that they can't get with the cows. I mean, the cows aren't ever gonna be here in town with us.
Right, right.
As long as they, as long as it is, they kept, they cleaned and they, and they, where it's, where it's not the really odorous and they, that they, I, I don't see a problem with that, that.
I, I think.
I make a motion that we, that we, uh, make a variance into our ordinance for the, for the goats to, for her to have goats on her property and, and a letter to be wrote, Dave, to the county zoning board.
Is it zoning Patty or is it the commission? I'm not really sure who we send it to.
Let's, let's add in there with the maximum of eight, as far as that goes. That's two per kids. Are you good with that?
I'm totally fine with that. Yes.
As far as that goes?
Yes.
I mean, that way it doesn't get, you know, too.
Out of craziness.
Right.
Well, I, that or dairy. I thought about getting some, do, letting them do some dairy. The dairy that would stay then through the, through the winter time when their other ones kinda disappear, and maybe that would kinda soften it a bit, but. I always, I love milking. That's one of my biggest passions I've done since I was sixteen, but I can't have cows in town, so.
Again, with your other neighbors down there, they got cows.
I wish, but first, see, I asked. I said, are they residential too? And he said, yes. I said, gosh darn, why can't we just be on the other side of the road? I appreciate it. I'm just gonna shake your guys' hands. I appreciate that.
What we gotta say?
I mean, it's quite a bit.
Second on that motion?
My second motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Good job.
All right, let's move on to, we have cabs here, representatives?
Hi, um, thank you guys for allowing me to come out and share with you. Um, I did see you have, um, some of my pamphlets up there. I did bring some if you guys want any more information. Um, but my name is Kristen Rude. Um, I'm with, uh, Cabs, Casco, area bus service, um, it's a division of Cardinal Services in Warsaw. Um, and I came, I'm coming out here tonight to present with you guys, mostly educational, but also wanting to get feedback from the different communities about needs and barriers, um, that maybe is facing each of the small communities. I've been with Cabs since May of this year, so still relatively new, um, since I took this position. I've been meeting with different community members, and, uh, the one thing I keep hearing is that maybe not everyone is aware of what Cabs is and what service area and what we provide. So, um, Cabs does service all of Casco County, um, so even though our basis is in Warsaw, we provide services in all areas. As long as the ride starts and ends within county lines. Um, I went off script, sorry. Um, a little bit about our services. We operate Monday through Friday. Um, our office hours are eight AM to five PM. Our bus hours are six AM to six PM. To schedule a ride, you call in, um, talk to our dispatch and schedule that way. We are looking at some alternative scheduling routes, hopefully in the future, um, kinda move forward with the times, but for now, that, that's the, uh, best way to schedule. Our rides are based on a fare, so zero to ten miles is a dollar a ride, um, so eleven to twenty-five, I always get that one wrong, is two dollars, and above that is three. Um, and all of our buses, um, buses are wheelchair accessible, so handicap accessible. Um, another really cool service that Cabs offers is, uh, Medicaid transportation for non-emergent, emergency medical rides. So, if an individual has Medicaid, we are contracted with, uh, Verida and can provide transportation anywhere in the state of Indiana. Um, as far as scheduling, going back to that, we are, um, an on-demand service, so curb to curb, and we schedule rides based on availability. So, if someone you know needs a ride, we recommend they call as soon as possible. We schedule out up to three weeks ahead. Um, so have them call in and we'll get that right, both to the capacity and ability. Um. I understand that everyone here may not have a need or a barrier with transportation, but, um, transportation is something that faces all of us in the community at one point or another, and I really just wanted to see both from the council and then also, um, community. And we have friends and family. There's needs that you guys are aware of, um, wanted to see what those were. Are you guys aware of any needs in your community?
Whenever I've talked to anybody about cabs that they, those they, or people have said anything, that they don't usually, it's usually they do not know how to, what the rules of the, of contacting them, how to, how to get their service and that they, or that they didn't even know that we still had it. That it did, cause years ago, you, you guys had been in here, Dave, actually, I think it was up at the fire station, that, and they, um, but then it's, it's like, uh, whatever happened to that? It's a, it's a, why, we don't have that anymore, or do we? Or it's a, and it just kinda got, got lost to the wayside. So, people, they, people need to, they just be able to get the information that, yes, you are here and to know how to access it. That the, and what, whatever costs and.
The back of this pamphlet, and I don't know if you guys have needs to like share this. I can bring more if you want, if you have.
I was gonna make a suggestion. I mean, we could probably put something up here, you know what I mean?
That's what I was about to say.
For the people that come in and pay their bills to make it more, you know what I mean? You know, we can sort of help.
Anybody.
Okay.
Yeah, anybody wants to.
Yeah, that's something that could be.
That's a, that's a, that's possible. I'm not sure if we can, but it's possible, maybe, that they, but to start off by just having them here.
I do have an electronic version. I can get to someone if that's an option, um, but I'll definitely bring out some more paper copies for you under the, that I'm in here, um, because all of the information for scheduling is in that pamphlet.
And then if you get the other digital part too, cause the younger generation is into the digital part, so I mean, if you could bring that along with the pamphlets and maybe, you know, we can put it up inside here as far as that and try and help.
But having the hard copy also, it's one thing I've run into with my father-in-law, that he has no computer, no tablets, no email, no texting, that they, that they, so, I mean, and he lives in a community where there's a lot of people around that, that if, if it's not in hard copy, they, they have no idea about it. That, and the world has gone so much to electronic, but you gotta remember our older community.
We need to move on.
I understand that, absolutely. Yeah.
Okay.
Any other questions or needs? You know, um, we can transport animals if they are in the appropriate cages, um, so you can call and schedule a ride. Okay, all right, well, thank you guys again.
Yeah, thank you for coming. Okay, did we say Friends of Ant and Green is not here tonight?
No, they, they won't be here.
They are not here tonight. So, we're gonna move on to Casco County Visitor Center.
Hello.
It's your turn to talk, no.
Do you mind? I have some goodies for you guys. Hi, I'm Corey Hughes. I'm the executive director of the Casco County Convention and Visitors Bureau, and thank you Patty for speaking with me and allowing me, allowing me to speak today. Um, I am here on a mission, and I wanna show you it first. Um, yeah, thank you so. So, um, back in twenty eighteen, a group of Casco County partners provided a branding called Kula Casco, and the visitor center, um, was able to take over management of that in this year, and we will rebranded our visitor center brand from Live Well in the Moment to this. So, the goal with this brand is not necessarily just the use for us at the Convention Visitors Bureau, but it's to be a community-wide, county-wide brand to showcase why Casco is a great place to live, work, and play in every community in Casco County. And as part of that, they, back in twenty twenty, yeah, I'm gonna hold your finger, sir. I should have pulled it apart. They purchased Kula Casco road signs to be put, placed in every community in Casco. So, my mission this year with taking over, with managing the brand at the visitor center is to place these up at least two in every community in Casco. Um, six of them have agreed. Three of them are up, um, and I'm working on Ant and Green, Amy'sburg, to complete our communities, as well as Burkhardt, I mean, excuse me, Sidney and Claypool too. But my goal was, if there are locations in Ant and Green, I know we've had some issues, so we have so many communities are on a state road, so sometimes you have to have state permission to erect these. If that's the case, um, an example like Silver Lake, instead of putting them on fifteen, they put them on other areas in the community that they felt was best to display them. I do not want these to be placed on a new pole. I want them to be on, I, my preferred would be on an already existing pole. The only issue, I don't have the appropriate bolting to put it in, but we are providing the signage to the community if the council would approve that or if the community has any thoughts. So, it's just a overall, um, way that we're trying to showcase this brand as a great place to live, work, and play in this community, so.
I would think the, maybe out there on New Thirty, they, they, on our, they, Welcome to Ant and Green sign would, they, would be a good place for, for one of them, they, as you enter into town, and maybe the other one, they, on Old Thirty coming, they, they, one way or the other, I'm not sure which, that they, but there's also one on Nineteen, they, they, so we've got three other signs. We got four places that they.
We have more. I was just starting with two in every community, cause sometimes it can be difficult to find those appropriate already located signs. Um, I utilize Old Thirty. I travel in Ant and Green every day heading into the visitor center. Um, I know, I don't know if Old Thirty is an easier way, cause it's state road. I, I always get confused on if that's more managed by the county versus state road.
US, Nineteen comes up through as state road.
Yeah, but Old Thirty, there's.
Old Thirty is actually county property, but it's county highway.
So, the county manages it, right? And the marshal, and then all of a sudden.
But we have, we have the welcome signs on both, both sides of town, well, all four corners of town.
Wonderful. I, if you would agree to it, I would leave it up to you to decide where you think they would be best.
I'm, I'm completely for it as far as that goes.
Uh, I have more. I know if you were like, hey, let's start with two, you can always bring your community more if you feel that there are outlets.
Let's start with two and think about where we.
Yeah. If that is, we would love for all the communities in the county to have this and continue that initiative because we have a great county in Lebanon, and all the communities are part of that, so that's just making sure, especially cause I come right through Bourbon every day and coming on my way in, so I'm coming to Ant and Green, so I.
And since we're, we're right on, so close to the county line that they, that they, it would be good, good place for people to coming, coming in from the Marshall County to see that they, now, now you're in Casco. coming in from Marshall County to see that now you're in Casasco County.
Exactly.
I'm right on the edge.
Clearly not, yeah, Dave got you on that one.
I hear a lot of little things, literally, but that was like, no, I'm right on the other side. Really, literally, I'm right on the other side.
You better start looking, you gotta get back in the county.
If you find any houses, let me know, because we've been looking. I am happy, I don't know if you have any, but if you have any other questions, let me know. We just have these at the visitor center, I can return with you or whatever you guys feel.
What do you think, Nick, are we all good?
I don't think you need a motion.
We don't need any motion or anything like that to do that? Okay, I agree with it.
Yeah, it's a good, it looked good.
Appreciate it. If you ever have any needs or need additional resources, Patty, I know we have some of the visitor guides and things in here that you needed that didn't, in your town, in here, just let me know. Happy to bring them this way.
All right, we're gonna go to old business right now. Do we have anything to go over as far as that goes?
There's a couple things that, let's see, in May and in June, it was brought up in the minutes for Invoice Cloud for credit card payments, and people continuously asked for it. And it was tabled in May, and then in June, it was tabled to the next meeting, and then it was, it was, nothing more was done with it, but it is something that would, that is wanted by the people, by many people in town. It would make things, the taking of payments a lot easier and be...
Do we have any information on that, so that the rest of us can look at it?
You got all that in May.
In May, I didn't remember getting anything other than the discussion.
I was here and I remember...
We need to look at it as far as that goes, and I don't remember getting to see anything as far as to see how it was gonna work or how it was gonna happen or anything like that.
Oh, it was, it was in your packets in May.
I'll have to go back and look and see that again. I just don't, I just want to make sure that we're not doing anything that excludes older people as far as that goes. You know, so that it makes it simple for them to still walk in and make their payments.
Oh, the office is still gonna be open for anybody, that it's just for people who want to use this. That they go online and make the payment without having to come in here.
We can take a look at it, but I don't remember seeing anything, so we need to look at that before we can, we can make a decision on that. So if you want to get us the information back again, and we can take a look at it again, then we can go over it.
In March, it was called for an executive session to discuss applications. And from what I understand, it never happened. And then in July, Kelly was here from Water Alliance, and it was talked about the conditions for Brian. And that the council at that, at that point, agreed, that promised to get Brian more help.
We did.
We had, we had one person that was mowing, and that, and we pissed him off so much, they quit. Now we've got another person mowing, so we're back to the same point as what we were.
When you go to applications, Keith, I have over a hundred of them over at the shop as far as that goes. And the applications that we received at the time, there was nobody in there that's actually qualified that just jumps out and says, hey, you know, this is the right person for the job. And we've been, we've been, we're nine months or ten months into this now as far as that goes. And we are, things are getting done, you know what I mean? Maybe not as fast as what we'd like, or you know what I mean? I, sorry, you know, Brian, you still need some help, I've got some help right here as far as that goes. This would take the workload off of Brian as far as that goes, gets a certified wastewater, and the people that we really need here that have experience, so that when there's a water leak or when there's some sort of a leak, we've got experienced people here that will help him jump right on this and take care of that stuff. So, I mean...
We'd be a lot better off in the end with our own people and not having to rely...
That's your opinion, that's your...
Yes, that's my, that's my opinion, and I have the right to my opinion and my right to voice my opinion on this council.
But we don't need to sit here and argue about it, that's your opinion, everybody else is allowed their opinion. So we're not gonna argue until you get what you want, it doesn't work that way.
No, but I can state my opinion and state the facts of it.
As long as you don't get loud about it, because nobody here wants to hear yelling and you're being out of order by yelling.
I'm not yelling, all I'm saying is that we, you guys agreed to get him help, and it has not happened, that's been since July. You've had nine, ten months to get, with those applications. And most of them are probably worthless because they're, because they're old and the people have gotten jobs that, that they're not worth even looking at anymore. That we have one right here, Michael Walters, that I gave, gave him to you, and that he's available. And he is, he's not certified, but he's qualified in so many ways that he would be a perfect person to go into training.
Okay, we have, right now, we don't have anybody certified to do it, Brian's in the process, correct?
Yes.
Okay, so we have to have somebody else take care of that.
Yes.
So what would be the advantage of hiring two full-time employees that neither one of them are certified to do it?
That's exactly what I'm saying right now.
The training, the training would already be starting on both of them. Yes, but the thing is, the sooner we have, soon as...
Mason was in the apprentice program, the same time I started water, he started his wastewater. You can't have two apprentices, well, actually, I don't know if you can or not, but you can't. But you can have a wastewater apprentice and a water apprentice.
Once, once one person becomes completely certified, we can, we can have the other person being, that person, like when Andy first came on, Barry was trained, was certified in water and wastewater. And while he took training, that Barry signed it, that we didn't have to have somebody here. But so as soon as we can get one person completely certified...
That's three years.
Then we can, but we need to keep working at it, and in the meantime, the other person can start his training and get closer to being certified himself while Ashbury...
We got people asking questions, hold on, you can't overtalk everyone.
Okay, I'm kind of hearing mixed here, because first they said only one could train at a time.
Only one can train at a time.
So only one is paid in a grant as a time.
But the town could pay someone else to be trained.
Yes.
Are there any stipulations in place that once they're trained, they hop to another town and take the money?
Well, that's something that needs to be added into everybody.
So they can't hop once they're trained. So they're here for a certain length of time.
Right.
Either that or they pay the money back.
They'll have a contract with them, yes.
Because once you do all that training, you really don't want to lose them then and start over.
So do we know what level of classifications we have to have for a wastewater treatment operator and a water treatment operator? Well, that's why we're going with Ashbury, because they have all certifications.
But we don't know what level we have to be certified for.
No, we're still working with training one person right at the moment as far as that goes, that's why we rely on Ashbury.
You mean, is what the permit says?
Like you can have a level one, two, three, four?
Right, right.
That's what I wonder, what classification level do you have to add?
We are still working on getting some of that information.
Ashbury will be, will train whoever we have to whatever is needed, I mean, whatever is needed, they will be trained to.
But I'm not getting an answer, you need a level two, you need a level three, you need a level one.
This is what we're still, like I said, I'm, I'm working with Ashbury, trying to figure out some of this stuff. I'm trying to make a solution so that I know that we're covered as far as that goes. I am not behind hiring a second person for this town as far as that goes. I would rather have somebody that's a professional, somebody that's certified, somebody that we know is gonna be here every day or whatever. And we have a part-time guy, you know what I mean? So that Brian has a helper for whenever he needs as far as that goes. But like Dave's bringing up here, the benefits that we pay and everything else, I don't want to put another person on full-time. That's my opinion as far as that goes, so I mean, it's...
I get it, it roughly rounds out about a hundred thousand or more. That's good, that's a good roundabout estimate, earned for you.
That's, that's a high estimate.
I have a quick question, and I guess it's more so for Ryan, but does he feel like he needs that second full-time person? Or does Brian feel comfortable with after doing what they're doing and then having a part-time employee to help him?
Right, well, Brian, what do you think?
I want to know how Brian feels, because I've seen the pressure is on him.
A lot of the time, it would be nice to have another person, because like if I'm out there working at the wastewater plant and I got, say, the one ditches down or whatever and I'm working on it, and I get a phone call, I gotta come in town because it's going up there and it's transformed or something, somebody doesn't have the power. Either the plant stays down until I go fix the power, the problem or whatever.
You won't be working on the plant no more, Ashbury will take care of that.
Well, it depends on how long they're here for the day, I mean, if they leave and something happens out there, I mean, I'm pretty well capable of taking care of it and stuff. I'm just saying, right now, where I'm at right now, is it's not, I'm out there working, and I get a phone call because I gotta come in because somebody lost power or whatever, well, do I leave the plant down and come in town and fix it, or do I hurry up and try and fix what I'm doing out there and then come in? If I had another person out there, they say, hey, I gotta run into town and do this real quick, I'll be back, that person can still keep working, and I can come in town and do other stuff.
I, I was a part-time employee for a long time, and I could work under Barry and Andy.
Right.
And as a part-time, I could do the sewer and the water.
Right.
So, I mean, I don't know if like a part-time could help him, like where it could be even from what he was doing out there, for him to come in town and do whatever he needed.
That was with Barry and Andy being certified and they could sign off on your testing, that...
Will then Ashbury sign off as a part-time employee?
It's possible that, but it's, it's getting to be a reach that, that it would be better if, my opinion, it'd be better if we had our own people certified, rather than paying extra for somebody. Because no matter what, when we bring somebody in from an outside company...
Can I say something though? I believe what Heath is saying is he wants to hire Ashbury to take the burden off of Brian while he's being trained. This will not be...
It's not a full-time thing.
This will not be forever, it will just be while Brian's being trained.
That covers, you have to have somebody that's certified to sign off on all the documentation and to certify that what's being done is being done correctly.
Right.
And that's...
It has to be done.
So if he starts to call somebody else to do that too.
Impa takes care of all of our electrical right now, as far as that goes.
So if electrical goes down, Impa's called anyway.
Right.
Well...
He has to go check it and then call them.
Right.
And then he can go about whatever he has to do after that.
But if it's something simple that he can, he can take care of, then it's taken care of without, otherwise, if we don't have Brian here, then we lose electricity, we have no idea what's going on. And it's gonna be an hour, hour and a half wait for Impa to arrive just to look and see, oh, we need more people here or something, then we're sitting around, and that's just gonna extend the power outage. I think we ought to wait for the cost study to come in, that, before we, before we go with something like that, that...
It's a year contract, is all it is, Keith, it's a year contract. So if we move forward with this, it gets Brian help, Brian's not working weekends anymore, he's opened up, you know, how much does it take every day for you to do the water stuff, Brian? So it's gonna open that up, so that you got that time for other stuff, you're not gonna be here working on your holidays anymore as far as that goes, it'll be taken care of. I mean, do I have any comments from anybody out here, I mean, as far as, does anybody, is anybody against this Ashbury thing and us getting Brian some more help?
No, well, here's what you can't be, I mean, yeah, you can say you don't want to spend the money, but the problem is, is you know me.
Right.
You have to have a certified operator sign off on that. So it doesn't necessarily matter, until we have one that's certified, we have no choice.
That's another one right there.
In the meantime, I just think it would be smart, why don't we get quotes from everybody and do studies? Patty would know how much we're actually paying and stop doing it all ourselves, get quotes from everybody and see if it's even feasible.
Last meeting, we had asked Baker Tilly to do a price, a cost study on the, on the different avenues of it. And that, I think we ought to have that before we, before we jump into it, that even, even for a year, that, that's it, that's gonna be expensive, that we need to know what we're talking about.
Then what are we gonna do, what are we gonna do about getting Brian some help then?
That...
Right now, we have to have Ashbury.
Right.
Yeah, we have to, and we do, we do have, we do have Ashbury.
I am not in favor of hiring another employee until the time that Brian is certified.
I agree, I agree.
Well, he has to have enough help, that guy is just going in backwards, backwards, sideways, you know? So he can learn the classes, take the classes, and get his certifications, that's the problem.
Right.
I don't want you losing a guy like that, that's busting his butt day in and day out, seven days a week. Because he's so overwhelmed, he doesn't know which way is up.
Well, I understand that.
So we have to make sure that we're gonna do this, as a town, we have to support that we're gonna get him enough help that he can get these certifications and do what he needs to do as a servant.
And he's gonna be around more experienced people with having Ashbury here more often as far as that goes. I mean, they can help answer any of his questions, help him with, you know, any of these problems that we have here that need to be taken care of.
Right, I mean, consensus from here is that that is a good plan.
That's fine, what can't we go with that one?
I can, I make a motion that we, that we move forward with hiring Ashbury for thirty-five hours a week.
And then we would keep... For the one year.
For one year, for one year.
We would keep our full-time employee and one part-time.
And one part-time employee.
Brian, is that enough for you?
Yeah.
And who's the part-time employee?
Richard, he mows the grass and he helps Brian.
Okay, he's the one that was here a couple months ago when I was there.
Yes.
Is everybody agreed?
There has to be a second up here.
I know, I'm gonna hear. Okay.
I'd say as long as Brian's good with it, I think we're all good with it. I hate to lose a guy on the way. He needs time off.
Right. All in favor? I, motion passed. So, on this, do I take and sign it then and give it to you?
I would have to look at it.
Okay. It just has one on there for me.
Heath, if you bring that down here, I can send it to Ashbury.
Okay, or I can scan it and send it to him too, as far as that, unless you want to do it.
That's my job, but if you want to do my job...
Okay, no, I'll let you, I'll let you use your ink, okay, that's fine, that's fine.
Yeah, I would maybe just, as a formality, have somebody make a motion, authorize Heath Roberts to sign the contract on behalf of the town council.
All right.
I make a motion that we allow Heath to sign the contract with Ashbury for the town.
My second motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, we're gonna move on to employee comments, Brian, you got anything for us?
In your Ashbury report, there's a quote in there for the purchase and installation of five Omni Beacon auto dialer systems for the lift stations.
I already seen, I know what he's talking about.
The total is seven dollars and fifty-eight dollars. And that's for all your full list, five lift stations, even the one out there at the Roy's. So, you, we'll go ahead and get this.
I approve, or we can make a motion, or if I'm...
I'd make a motion.
Would that go, come out of the ARPA funds?
That comes out of that one we got to spend before the end of the year.
Okay, make a motion that that would come out of the ARPA funds.
I make a motion, we, we purchase those, say, from the Through the ARPA fund for the, what is it, telecommunications?
The dialer system, yeah.
Yeah, for the lift stations.
Yes.
My second motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I have one question. So when Brian goes to his pole climbing class and all that stuff for the two weeks, will Impa be on site for that?
Mm-hmm. They're gonna, well, they'll, they'll be here that thirty-five hours to take care of the water and the sewer, or Ashbury.
Not Impa.
No.
It will, rephrase that again, I'm sorry.
So when he goes for his electrical side, for his pole climbing class and all that, he's gone for two weeks.
Right. Yes.
Who will be here to take care of it?
I have to call Impa.
Okay.
And they'll be.
So either way, it's gonna be about two and a half, three hours.
It is gonna be a two hour, as far as that goes, before Impa gets here. Um, Impa is taking and working. They're trying to put together like a northern hub as far as, so that in the future, the, in the coming future, that maybe we could possibly take in and call Breaman and say, hey, can you guys come down and fix this real quick? You know what I mean, to coordinate? But it's something that they're working on doing. It's not happening yet, but they're talking about it. You, you know what I mean? So. Right, so, but.
They're short on linemen, they, the way it is and the hubs that they already have, so they, so it's, it's a matter that they've got, they've gotta get more linemen and linemen, they, they mostly, see, that's where we had a good deal with our, they, with the, with Barry and Andy, that they were both certified linemen. And they, that most linemen are paid a hundred thousand dollars a year plus benefits.
Well, we don't have.
Well, that's the thing that we don't.
No, we don't have that now, but they, but the, the thing is, that's what they, they, we're up against that they, and as, and Impa's up against is they, to hiring more that they.
So a question for you. I know they were talking about looking at doing something like around Southwood or something like that, as like a holder.
Right, right, right.
So it, so you're, what you're saying is, is that possibly still in the works? It just hasn't been.
It, it gets, it gets brought up, as far as that goes, as far as, Heath, I'm the one going to the meeting, so I'd appreciate it if you'd let me talk to him about this.
They're working on it. And I've been to, and I've been going to the meetings.
Well, you're no longer the president of the town council, okay, so it's, it's my job to lead this meeting, as far as that. Is that understood?
Yeah.
I just wanted to make sure that it, it was either gonna be status quo, start with waiting if we had power out during that time, so this way he can get his property.
Oh, yeah, that's, yeah, part of the, like I said, as far as, so we can, yeah, but it's gonna be two hours, as far as that goes, until it's in the works, you know, Impa's trying.
Okay, thank you.
What do other towns around here do for, that don't have their own electric service and stuff like?
Like Atwood, Nipco?
What other towns?
Nipco, RMC.
Yes, right.
So they just, they, Nipco basically owns all of it, they take care of it.
Right.
Or RMCs.
So they don't go through Impa?
No, no, no.
RMC doesn't come in that the green does it?
Oh, no, no.
So what other, what other towns use Impa then?
I think RMC comes in from the east.
What's this list of?
Argus is.
Argus, Argus, Breaman, um, Chairbusco, they're, the whole state, really, I mean, there's, when I go to these meetings, there's, yeah, there's, there's a bunch of.
Sixty-two communities.
So those towns still own their electric infrastructure, but they use Impa?
Yes. Yes.
They buy, buy electricity from Impa.
I would imagine Impa has enough trouble getting linemen, just like everybody else.
Oh, they do, they do.
Yeah, they, and that's part of, right, that's part of the reason why we don't have that hub made up yet.
That's why you're a lineman in Florida right now, from California.
Right. Okay. So.
It's like anywhere else, you know, honestly.
Yeah. Year and a half ago, when we first signed up to get the service contract with the, with Impa, that we um, that that made it a lot more feasible for them to make a hub, but the biggest problem is, is they don't have line, enough linemen to actually man another hub.
Okay.
And they're, they're working on it.
Okay, thank you guys, I appreciate it.
Yeah. Let's move on to council comments.
I would like to read something. Um, I'm not a very good public speaker, so I've written all this down because I've got some figures here and everything, so I will start with this. Um, I'm going to be, go back a few years and fill everyone in on some things you probably aren't aware of. I'm not sure of the year, but the work was started by the board at the time to get a company to move at the green. I believe KECO was involved with that, if I'm not mistaken, but when everything was placed in place, there was a USDA loan taken out and not knowing all the details of that loan. But the town of Etna Green makes that loan payment every month and then the company pays the town. So we're responsible basically for that payment, that loan payment.
Which, what loan is that for?
It's a USDA loan.
But it has to be, it had to be done through a municipality as the, as responsibility, but we have a contract with.
Keith, Suzie has a floor.
Yeah, let, 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 I'm not even know what she has to say.
Okay, I was answering his question. Well, you'd be quiet.
We're responsible for the payment, okay? Uh, it's determined that our wastewater plant had to be expanded to accommodate the increase that this would add to the system, so in twenty sixteen, a bond was taken out called the Sewage Works refund, Refunding Revenue Bond. So to give you an idea what it entails, there are two payments made a year on that bond. Every year that goes by, those payments get higher. This year, the first payment in January, January first, was for fifteen thousand two hundred ninety-nine. Now, this is at a three point four percent interest. So that, the interest on that was eight thousand four hundred fifteen for a total payment of twenty-three thousand seven hundred fifteen. The second payment was made July first for fifteen thousand five hundred sixty with eight thousand one hundred fifty-five dollars in interest for the second payment of twenty-three seven fifteen, so each payment was twenty-three seven fifteen. So far this year, we have paid forty-seven thousand four hundred thirty towards the bond. So right now, we just owe under four hundred fifty thousand dollars. And this bond is not scheduled to be paid off until July first of twenty thirty-six, so we have eleven more years of paying on it. When it's done, we will have paid six hundred and eighty-eight thousand and twenty-six dollars in payments, two hundred and sixty-eight thousand and eighty-two dollars in interest for a total of nine hundred and fifty-six thousand one hundred and ten. Since that upgrade was done, the company has gotten their own system and the town has lost forty-one thousand dollars a year in revenue. Uh, what I don't understand is why a letter of intent or a letter of content was not signed. You're probably familiar with that.
I'm not. That was all done before I took over.
But I meant the letter of intent. That we could have had them stay on the wastewater plant until that bond was paid off.
Yeah, something like that could have been discussed.
Yeah, okay. But we didn't.
It was, it wasn't foreseen.
It, well, I mean, common sense would tell you.
Uh, if we had no idea at the time that they would, that there would be the tech, technology to do it.
It would have been an agreement between the town and the company that the town was going to make that large of an investment, that they would agree to stay on the town system until the bond was paid off. If that would have been done, we wouldn't have been in the situation we are in now. Revenue from water and sewer rates unfortunately will continue to be the primary source of funds to operate these utilities. The infrastructure in Etna Green needs fixed and upgraded and this all creates mounting problems for small towns with shrinking populations like Etna Green. We all take for granted getting clean water when we turn on our faucets and having waste disappear down the pipes without even thinking about it. We never think about these complicated and expensive systems needed to deliver those services to us all. As our system needs repairs and upgrades, it's hard to accept a higher bill for these services that we have taken for granted. There's not one person at this table that wants to raise your bill from the town one penny. We all live here too and don't want our bills to go up either, so that leaves us. What do we do? Towns are having problems with people getting certified and leaving as soon as they get their certification. With past problems, there's been a question if two full-time people is needed. The expense involved is not only the wages, but the benefits that are paid. To give you an idea, the insurance the town has now is based on age. Because of that, the last two full-time people the town employed, the insurance included health, dental, vision and life insurance. Now Patty, that was six thousand dollars a month is what you told me, right?
Yes.
So those two employees cost the town a hundred and forty-four thousand dollars a year. We tragically lost an employee in August of twenty twenty-three that was mentoring our two apprentices that were learning, learning the wastewater and water operations. They pretty much got thrown under the bus and was trying to get through each day the best they could. Contracts were signed for both Ashbury and, and Impa. Uh, Ashbury would be mentoring the wastewater and water apprentices and Impa would, contract was signed, so we would cover for the electric. In November of twenty twenty-three, it was noted that the employee apprentice for the wastewater was not performing as expected and Alliance of Indiana Rural Guard terminated his apprenticeship. Also in November, item, which stands for Indiana Department Environmental Management came in. These inspector monitors and inspect facilities to sure, ensure compliance with permits and other requirements of state laws and rules based on the Clean Water Act. Our facility was deemed unsatisfactory during their inspection with many noted concerns. It's going to cost a lot to get that filthy facility up to standards and we are working with Commonwealth engineers that are helping with the funding grant and use their expertise to get us in compliance. In March of this year, a new Impa service contract was signed. For anyone that does not know, Impa stands for Indiana Municipal Power Association. It's a not-for-profit, not-for-profit utility and provides sixty-one communities throughout Indiana, Ohio with wholesale power supply and the town's been with them for many years. That brings us to our current situation. Do we hire another employee, which would be hired another apprentice, or do we keep a part-time employee to help Brian and continue with the Ashbury contract? That assures us of already certified people that know what they're doing. They take care of the reporting and have, have to answer to the state, which takes all that responsibility off the town. Ashbury gives us a report every month on the wastewater plant and its performance, which we pretty much took care of that.
We just took care of that problem.
We know it's not fair that Brian is testing the water seven days a week, twenty-four seven for electric and part-time was hired to do the mowing and help Brian when needed. We currently pay Ashbury a hundred and nine, eight hundred for the Ashbury contract. Per year was nine thousand one hundred fifty per month and that's for twenty-five hours. So we just signed this contract for one fifty-five for thirty-five hours and they take care of all the wastewater and water. So that kinda brings you up to date and kinda fills people in on some things maybe you didn't know about. So I just want complete transparency, so everybody in town knows exactly what's going on. Anybody have any questions?
The concept being that, that you're talking about, like, with the bond, is that why Winona Corp is that?
Yes, it is. Yes, it is, and we're not, yeah.
No, they don't have a bond.
I mean.
That bond is from the wastewater plant. They have a USDA loan. That was two different things.
From the building. Right, right. There's a lot of it that needs to be, I mean.
I think she's asking about what the company is that she was referring to.
Yes.
Yes.
What's up?
So what you're saying, that the town is paying, there, is because they build out here or they're operating out here?
They got their own system.
Right.
They got their own system.
But they were paying up until they put in their own system.
That's where we lost the forty-one thousand.
But we were still gonna keep paying, but, okay.
Yep, we lost forty-one thousand.
Because they quit paying the town now, they were basically paying that.
But, but shouldn't, they shouldn't, well, I know, they should have had to sign something to begin with.
There's no way to get it.
And there, I would think that there would be a way that we could make them continue to pay because they were part of that bond.
That would be, Nick would have to do some real digging.
Yeah.
So if there was no contract.
Yeah, if it got.
Yeah, but when you make one payment, then you're, you're on the hook for it.
No, unfortunately, I think that sailed. When they were paying, they were paying their utilities to the town and the town was using that money to cover some of the expense. And then they decided to build their own system out there. And they, they've done that, that's all been taken care of now.
Now, I, is, is, are they still getting tax exemptions from the, from the county and the, and the town?
I'm not sure.
Because they're always asking for tax exemptions.
I don't know.
I'm not sure.
I think they're, I think they're out, out of date on that, that they, they passed for that.
Cause I thought I saw something about Winona recently.
Well, that would probably, might be at a different location. They've got multiple locations.
Cause I wouldn't think they'd get any exemptions if they stick to town for money.
Well, you, you gotta understand, we lost forty-one thousand in revenue, but that bond payment comes out of that wastewater account too. So that's a kind of a double whammy.
Well, if, if we didn't have anything assigned, I mean, sounds like we're just.
Hold, right, hold on, the bond was for the building of the waste treatment plant, long before Winona Corp came in.
If they need one.
The bond was to expand the waste treatment plant, that they, um, the loan with the, with Winona Corp, we make the payments to the USDA and the, and, and then Winona Corp pays us back plus a fee. So we actually get, they, so they're two completely separate things and we did, and they, they are paying for that loan completely themselves, plus giving us a fee. The bond is, was there before, when they were still down in Mentone, that they, and that's what they, and it was like a thirty-five year bond that they, that we, we took out in order to expand the waste treatment plant.
Winona Corp's are paying.
Oh, yeah.
They, they paid what they, what.
Less interest.
Is that a contract they're paying or is it?
It's, it's, it's contracted, it's, I mean, they're.
There's all sorts of documents for that.
Water, water utilities and electric.
Oh, yeah.
But they, it's just that they've cut down on, they, on, they still use our water. They pay for our water, but the thing is, is that they, they process the wastewater themselves.
Can you pay, can you charge extra fees for businesses?
Out south, the town for future development.
My water's high enough, I don't need it anymore.
I'm not like a manufacturing company like they are. There's, there's two manufacturing companies in town, right?
Well, I'm a manufacturing company too, as far as that goes, but I mean.
We have ordinance that specify the different rates, for the, for the different, for the different size lines and what all feeders and that that is, they, that is specified in our ordinances.
Okay.
Um, so there was, just to clear something up, there was rumor rolling around that over here with setting the new pole for the bubs and then putting up a second pole and new transformers and those types of things. Was it a new transformer that was put up or did they?
I can, if, I mean, I explained this at the last working meeting last week, as far as that, as far as making it. There was a work order put in to replace the pole behind bubs, as far as that goes. That pole is in very bad shape, as far as that. And there's internal power problems, as far as their power problems with these two apartments, with lights flickering, appliances not working properly and stuff. While Impa was here doing the inspection on that pole, they would go back to the next pole. That pole's cracked in four spots and it has transformers hanging on it. So they planned on taking and changing that pole out also, as far as that. In the process of that, as far as while they're taking and, and looking at that, they go through and do amp loads to know how big the transformers need to be. The transformers that were hanging on that pole were not to code, as far as the way that they were wired, as far as that. And there was not enough amps there. So if Impa would have taken and put those transformers back up, there would still be some power problems here with these two apartments, as far as that. When the two businesses next to each side of it, as far as that, flipping on power, it's gonna make their lights flicker, it's gonna make their appliances act goofy and stuff like that. Therefore, Impa had to take and put three new transformers on that pole in order to make it back to code. And that is the reason for the transformers being hung there. This, there's no bill to the town here, as far as that. There will be no invoice for those transformers or anything. It's all part of the maintenance program that we have signed with Impa, as far as that. So it comes out of the total, as far as what Impa does. You know, and it's just like, I've asked these questions of Impa, you know, hey, if we call and there's an emergency, is there another fee for that? No, it is part of our contract and it's what we pay for already, as far as that. So that's basically is, is a maintenance issue, as far as that. I mean, there's one pole cracked, the other one's cracked. I mean, that pole feeds, you know, feeds all you prices, it feeds Patty's house, I mean, it feeds quite a few people down the road. And it's not to say that there hasn't been power fluctuation problems in those homes also, because those transformers were undersized, so. And that the X and Y was backwards. So I had to open, my building had to be opened up so that he could figure out which one was which, to make sure and hook it back up. So, but yeah.
A lot of people were jumping to conclusions.
Is that something they're checking on?
Well, well, Impa, like I said, that's part of the program, as far as what's going on, and what we're gonna have to do is do like a five-year plan and start going around and looking at these and start saying, okay, let's do five poles this year, you know, so right now, we're at two poles, as far as that, so, well, we're at four, but that's for new construction for this other project that's going on over here. But to start replacing poles every so many years, so that it's not a big budget hit. It's not like we're gonna come in and change all of them at once, but we need to get on this program of doing maintenance and not wait until it's broke in order to fix it. That we need to, along with our other utility stuff too, is that we stay on top of this stuff to make sure that, you know, we have good power, we have good water, you know what I mean, and stuff, instead of wait until it's broke to address the problem, so.
Has anyone contacted Comcast to tell them to move their wires? Cause they're still on the old pole.
Right, right, that is, yeah, Impa's not allowed to touch that stuff, as far as that goes, right. They, they can't take it, yeah. And there's a whole bunch of wires sticking up out of the ground back there too, right? See, yeah, somebody needs to, you're more welcome to call and complain.
Hey, I cut their, cut their wire off.
I know you did, I know you did, I know.
My daughter in, in, had to call inspectors in for the counties to come check wiring because the, the utility companies wouldn't come pick stuff.
Right, right, I'm trying to eat.
Be surprised how fast they moved after that went to the county.
Right, right, right. So.
One thing I'd like to say is that they, when we signed the contract for the service agreement with Impa, that they came into town and they did several studies at that point, they, and they were impressed at the way that the condition of the town, because they say most, a lot of times when they sign a service contract. Everything is run down into the ground that that our system was it was very well maintained and was very big that it. There was we could just go in and just be a regular maintaining. It's not and it's like those poles. If they every time, every once in a while, you're gonna find a pole that's cracked, then they they need replaced. That they but right now, the way it is that they at they it's not every pole in town that they they they. They told us it was very they the town was in good shape and it's just.
Evidently not, or they wouldn't have made repairs.
It's a continuous work. It did. It was not neglected that we that they. I mean, I remember years ago when we had the uh power outages ten times a year.
Alright, I make a motion and we adjourn this meeting.
Yes, I second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We need to get the sheriff, Jeffy, back in here.
Nobody said anything about it being neglected.
Well, that that's what I was getting from them because that they that's what they were saying it's the power. Oh, there was poles that were cracked. Okay, yeah, if poles are cracked, they need replaced.